Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. But the records show that we have four commissioners present and one commissioner joining us by telephone. That would be Commissioner Frederick. First item up is the Order of Business. Are there any items on the Order of Business that you wish to discuss? Or are there any amendments, Mr. Gah?
Thank you, President Decker. There is one amendment to the agenda under Public Works. An item A has been added, Highland's Engineering Change Order for Mill and Overly.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the amendment? Or the change to the Order of Business? Any other questions on the Order of Business? Not, I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business? With a second. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? All in favor of the Order of Business as amended, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say.
Aye.
Turn it down a little. Alright. So he is present. The motion carries on the Order of Business. Consent agenda, are there any items that commissioners wish to discuss on the consent Not, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Go move.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the consent agenda. First item up this evening will be Administration and Finance and Mr. Maury will be presenting the quarterly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and members of the Commission. This next couple of slides are to be an overview of the financial report that you receive in your packet, just basically summarize the information that you were given. This first slide is for the Treasurers' Report. This is our net working cash total that we have. We're right around that $60 million range, no major changes since the last time we were presented. We've been consistently in that area over the last couple of reports. As far as our investments, no major changes there as well. We have made all of our pension contributions that were budgeted for 2019, they were taken out in January. So you won't see any increases, or major increases I should say, to these funds, but we will have our distributions come out as normally planned. Moving on to the 1% sales tax, and just as a reminder to the public like we always do, these collections are made on a two-month leg. So, for example, collections that we receive in June are actually based on April's collections. So through the first two quarters of 2019, we are actually about a 7% increase over where we were for the first six months of 2018. And from June of 2018 to June of 2019, we're about $32,000 higher, which is a 7% increase for that month. Our 1% sales tax, we're on pace to finish with about $5.8 million ahead of our forecast of about $5.2. This half percent sales tax slide, we always show again, just because, you know, when we receive our sales tax, it's a one lump sum, and then when we receive it, we distribute it between our 1% sales tax fund and our half percent sales tax fund. So these are exactly half of the previous slide. Moving on to our hospitality tax. For the first six months of 2019, we're about 3% higher this year than we were through the first six months of the previous year. And then we're actually, even though we're 15% lower in our June collection, June of 2019 compared to where we were in June of 2018, we're still a 3% increase overall for the first six months. Budget-wise, we're on pace to finish with about $920,000 ahead of our forecast of $875,000. Our occupancy tax collections, on this slide here, I just want to remind the Commission and the public as well that we do take a half of 1% administration fee out of these collections, but this slide shows the full collection amount that we receive from the state. We're at about 12% higher through the first six months of 2019 as compared to 2018. And then moving on to our oil impact revenue. So you can see that the blue line in 2018, that was when we had our $2.5 million that we were taking out going to Dickinson State University. You can see in the first probably six, seven months of 2018, and then our revenue started to increase towards the end of 2018, and now we're kind of leveling off in 2019. We forecasted around $11 million when we set up our budget for 2019. We're on pace to finish with just under $13 million, so we're ahead of where we initially And then this final slide is a snapshot of your receivable and payable summary that you received in your packet as well. We just want to include this slide, just to remind the Commission that, you know, we do have breakdowns in there. If you have questions on any specific numbers, please let the finance staff know and we can get you an answer. So that concludes the financial report for the second quarter of 2019. City staff recommends approval.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Steiner?
One on the sales tax, the 1% and the 2%. Is it much of a problem for you to, at the next meeting, show us the trend line for the last five years?
Yeah, absolutely.
Kind of see how it went in and coming out of this here last, you know?
Yes, Commissioner Steiner, we can absolutely do that. Last five years is what you'd be looking for?
Okay, yeah, if you could please.
Yes, absolutely.
Five years. And then, of course, the 91 and over on the accounts receivable, the $96,000. I see a lot of that as individual names, or those people that have left the community that owes money for water, that type of thing?
There's a lot of different, unique situations, and Deputy Administrator Carlson can probably touch on that better than I can.
Okay, I will be glad to answer that. A lot of those are not with utilities. These are non-utility accounts, the ARs are, and most of them are either a contract or they are insurance payments where they, something, they damaged the city property, and this is the balance of what the insurance didn't pay and things like that. So, and we have implemented a collection policy, and we are now working with DCI on these.
Okay, I was just wondering if some of them should just be written off, or?
That is the goal, that the end of 19 with our policy that will be coming forward to the Commission before the end of the year here, we will have a policy that will be for write-offs, but we have to do our due diligence through the credit.
Makes sense, because we don't want to look at $96,000 when we know we're never going to collect it.
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
And I think a couple of those were, well, you've seen them, Mr. Steiner, they're very large, individual ones, and I know they've reached out, finances reached out continuously pursued to try to collect it, you know, just through the city, but now it's getting to the point where we're going to have to pursue other means. Anything else, Commissioners, on the financial report? Not, I'd look for a motion on the financial report.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the financial report? With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the financial report? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the financial report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up, we have a special assessment commission appointment. Mr. Gah, you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. And Commissioners, you have in your packet a citizen interest form from a resident, Cassia Ostrom, who's interested in the Special Assessment Commission. I believe at this time, there are three openings on that commission, so definitely we have the need, if there are any citizens listening to this and you're wanting to serve, here's a commission that we have some openings on and would use some interest. And it is staff recommendation to approve this appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on this appointment? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this appointment to the Special Assessment Commission.
Mr. President, I've read the bile, seems like she'd fit well with the committee, so I would make the motion that we approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on this appointment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is our job description, and it'll be presented by our HR Coordinator, Mrs. Nomenick. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. So the job description I have before you is the Records Clerk position. The position summary for this is, this position performs a variety of routine moderate to moderately complex office support work for the city's police department. They utilize the police records department system to perform record checks, disseminate all police reports to the proper agencies, and scan and file all police reports into police department automated record systems. This position communicates with the courts, prosecuting attorneys, and a variety of governmental agencies on the correct dissemination of reports. They're responsible for redacting for privacy issues while following state and federal laws for varying agencies. Some of the essential duties for this position is, they are the first point of contact for the police department when you come into the building. They communicate daily, if not hourly, with the people in the public by telephone, email, and mail. They register sex offenders, work closely with the detectives to ensure offenders' compliance with state laws. They do fingerprinting of offenders and for public, for various reasons, to the public. There are notaries, they have to notarize affidavits and documents for the department. Just some of the duties that they do. So, we went to look at this job description and the scoring, and when we were looking at it, we kind of compared it to, a little bit, to some of our other positions that are in a front-line, first person you see when you walk in the city, which would be similar to, like maybe our utility billing representatives that work here at City Hall. So we kind of compared some of the scoring in some of those areas, and when you look at relations to others, they were scored originally at a 2D, and according to how our scoring works, it's more appropriate for them to be scored at a 3D. They do communicate with the public daily. They have quite a bit of contact with the public. They handle sensitive, complex information on a daily basis. You know, everything that they do is very similar to those other positions, so that's why we're recommending that area be moved up. And the other area that we saw a little bit of a concern was with their experience. In the past, we were requiring a 2D, which tells us that they only need maybe up to a year of experience, a year or less. And to do this job effectively and efficiently, we really feel that a year to three years of experience is something that we'd like to require. Kind of experience that we're looking for in a position like this would be prior customer service experience, maybe some record-keeping administrative or office-type experience. With changing those two areas in the job description by just moving them up one degree, it does move this position to a Class II, Grade II, scored out at 425 points. We do have two employees in the department that this would affect, and we are looking for your approval. If you have any questions or anything, we'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenick on this?
What would the difference in a 2D salary to a 3D salary?
What we do when somebody's job description is, or their job description is moved up to the next pay scale, is we'll look at where they're placed in the current pay scale, and they'll get between a 3% to 5% increase, putting them in the right step in our pay scale, so we're looking at...
Currently now, what would say this 3D salary wage start at?
Looks like Mrs. Carlson's going to come to my rescue and show you that in the pay scale. Okay, currently, the Records Clerk at Step 1 would be $1583 an hour. At Step 2 would be $1821.
And that's starting?
That's starting rate.
That entry level.
Yeah, that's the entry level.
And this would include all the other benefits that?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Nomenick on this?
God, I have one.
Mr. Frederick?
Just curious, I see we updated this less than 10 months ago. What's changed since the last time we updated this job description?
Actually, at that time, we were kind of trying to decide if we were going to look at maybe having two levels of Records Clerks within the department. And after reviewing, I think honestly, we were kind of hung up on comparing this job description more with the dispatchers, and it's really not a comparison, an equal comparison. So we were kind of looking at, how do we score them out based on a Records Clerk, when really their duties fall more in line with what our admin assistants or positions such as the utility billing representatives. Nothing really has changed as far as their duties, except that I don't know that we were really scoring them properly. I don't think they really were fit into the pay scale accurately.
Any other questions for Mrs. Nomenick? Hearing no other questions, I'd look for a motion on the Records Clerk job description, or the reassessment, I guess, of that job description.
Mr. President, I move, will you approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Nomenick? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to make a comment that in our budgeting discussions and so on, and in trying to retain employees and so on, this fits exactly with what we're trying to do, not so much the upper-level salaries as we are a bit in the beginning here, so this is nice to see.
And the wage assessment is also what we're discussing in the budget, and this will be affected by that too, all these, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Nomenick. Alright, we'll move on to reports. Mr. Gah?
I have a few things to update you on. First, the Downtown Association has hired a new director, Loanne Way. She is here. I doubt that she needs an introduction, she has been an active member of this community forever, but just in case, she's going to come to the podium and just say a little bit, and if you have any questions, you can sure ask her. She has hit the ground running and is doing a great job.
Thank you, Joe. Greetings, President Decker and members of the City Commission. It's really been an exciting two weeks. I'm honored that they chose me, and I'm going to do everything I can to grow Dickinson into, or continue to grow Dickinson into the wonderful community it is, and continue to make downtown just a special place. It's been really exciting. We've had meetings last week. We held our first meeting to get the Capitol Campaign kicked off for the town square, so we're busy starting to get that pulled together and trying to come up with a strategic plan, and those efforts are going to be, you know, ongoing until everything gets kicked off. We have several big family events coming up, which, these are the things that, I mean, I'm just like, wow, we've got lots going on, so I hope I can see everybody on September 7th. We have the Blues Festival and a street fair downtown. We have Trick or Trunk on October 31st, Ladies Night Out on November 8th, the Old Fashioned Christmas Stroll and Parade of Lights on December 7th. So we have a huge slate of events, and that's been really exciting for me. A little overwhelming, but it's still really exciting. And with that, I really, I look forward to working with you. As you probably know, I've been in this community most of my life. I left a little bit and came back. I always seem to find my way home. So, thank you very much for the faith you have in me, and I'll do the best I can.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Mr. President, I thought she looked familiar, that we've seen her around.
Next up, another community effort that's been going on the last several years is downtown art, maybe under the theme oftentimes of alley art or other public spaces. There's some good examples of this. There's one in the underpass near Highway 22 in Villard, and then also on our downtown fire station is a very nice one. You have in your packet what the committee proposes next. It is on a privately-owned building at 128 First Street West. This will be on the backside of the building, which faces the city's large parking lot there, in the area of the, says it, State Farm, it's a building, Todd Otto's building.
Where the old City Hall was.
Yeah, yeah, so it will. It'll face out to the old City Hall site, which is our parking lot, which we're talking about improving, and the town square being in that neighborhood, I think this is a good site. So you have that there. Mark Billings leads that committee. He's here, if you have any questions. He said otherwise, he wouldn't say a word, but if he has something he wants to say, he sure can.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners and staff. I'm here just representing the project. I'm a private citizen in the community. Some of you know some of the work I do with a not-for-profit. I was selected this past year to be a part of the Change Network North Dakota, funded by the Bush Foundation, which provides a $5,000 grant for a community project, and I've chosen to work with the African community in developing this mural on the backside of Todd's building, as Mr. Gah was talking about. So I actually have a rendering of what it would look like on the building. I can make these available to you and leave these with you if you would like. We're also going to be showcasing the African community in Harvest Fest on September 14th. Rwanda's traditional dance group is going to be performing, it will be the first outdoor performance that they will be undertaking. So I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Billings, when is the mural set to be done?
As soon as possible. I have the artist here in the audience, he's here from California, and we're anxious to get started. We wanted to have you review it and receive your blessing before we start.
And he was the artist for the underpass and?
Yes, as well as the Firehouse mural and the 135 West Villard on the Best Friends Building.
You do great work.
At this time, you aren't asking for any funds?
No, no, the project is funded.
Which is, excuse me, which is important, because what we're seeing here over in Mandan the last few months is there's been a lawsuit against the painting on one of the bars there, and the city wanted them to take it down because it didn't fit in. They said it didn't fit in, well, they ended up going to court over it, and the court said that they were allowed to keep that, so. I don't know what our ordinance says, but I think we need to look into it, make sure that we're up to date, but this is exactly what they, happened in Mandan, where it didn't quite go along with what the city wanted, so.
I think Mr. Billings has worked with Mr. Hadley on projects like this, so I think we're up, following all zoning laws and code.
Mr. Billings, how, can you explain the process? I know this is going to be a question from the community. How is this artwork selected? Is there a committee? How do we get to this final stage?
Yeah, that is a great question. We have been working probably for the past eight months on this mural development. It was vetted by members of the local African community. I've been working with several local leaders from the local African community who've looked at this, because we wanted it to be representative of all African countries and not just a segment. And so we have that assurance, and then we were consulting with Mr. Avalos, who of course you're familiar with, in developing this design, and then securing Todd Otto's permission, working with Walter Hadley from the city in the development of this process all along. I began meeting with him back, probably back this past October. So this has been a multi-month process.
Mr. President, can I see the drawing, rendering?
Sure.
When you talk about Todd Otto's building, is that the, does he own the entire building all the way from the alley to the, okay. So, it almost looks like the whole building, but it's not, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a one-story building connected to another one, we're just doing his building.
When you showed it from up there, it looked like it was the whole building all the way down.
And I'll leave those documents with you if you want to reuse those.
And as Mr. Gah said, we are working to improve that lot there, take it away from just being a dirt lot, so.
I don't know if you, some of you have seen the Art Alley concept in Bismarck. I had the opportunity this past fall. It's just an unbelievable demonstration of community art, and this project, you know, one never knows, but it could possibly anchor the development of an Art Alleyway in Dickinson, and then create space in the alleyways for art events, other food events, utilizing the alleyway in Dickinson, which is kind of an underutilized gem.
Alright, any other questions or comments from Mr. Billings? Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you need a motion to approve?
No, this was just a report.
Alright, okay.
The last thing I have is just to remind you that we'll have our final budget review meeting next Wednesday, the 28th, at 8:00 AM.
So that'll be the August 28th, 8:00 AM, special commission meeting, so, on budget. And then the next item up, we have a 2019 Star Library Award. Good evening.
Good evening. President Decker, Commissioners, I'm happy to come and tell you that, share with you that the North Dakota State Library has, for the third year in a row, named our library a 2019 North Dakota Star Library. I just have a little paragraph from the State Librarian's letter to help you know how they come about making that decision. So they are awarding this to, for outstanding service to the community, and the library is selected as one of the top three performers in comparison with other public libraries with similar expenditures. So the assessment is based on library circulation, central branch, service hours, program attendance, combined computer and Wi-Fi usage, and the percentage of the North Dakota Library Coordinating Council standards for public libraries that have been met. So I'm just happy to share this with you again, and say, yeah, go us, I guess.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Nomenick, we have the Hiring Journal.
Okay, thank you again. The Hiring Journal, first off on the list is Police Officer. We have the position open again. I believe this position closes on the 6th of September, so we kind of had it open continuously here for a little while. Hopefully, we can get some of those filled. Communications Specialist, we have someone in the background phase right now, so hopefully that one will be filled, and someone's starting soon for that. Design Engineer has been a real tough one for us. We've had a really tough time getting applicants at all for the position. We did make an offer that was declined, so we don't currently have the position open. Operations Manager as well, we do not have open. Collections Route Operator, we had one opening left and made an offer, and then we're supposed to do paperwork this week, and that person declined. So we're back to opening that position. Part-time weekend evening... Part-Time Evening Scale Position, we've got one person who's been with us since we decided to do this, and he's been doing a wonderful job. I think we're going to just stick with that one person until our summer hours are over. We did have a full-time scale service representative that we had hired out of that evening weekend group of people, and she is going to be leaving us to go to college, so we're going to have to reopen that position. It is open right now and taking applications. We did just recently fill the Property Appraiser Technician position. If you remember, we had someone internally move up to a property appraiser, which left the technician position open, and we have filled that position, and that person has been working for us for a little bit now. Inner Library Loan Librarian position was opened. We're doing a lateral transfer of a librarian within the city right now to that position, which will open up our Bookmobile Librarian position. Water Utility Operator, we did some interviews today and looking at doing some offers there. We had a good day of interviews, and that is the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Nomenick. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenick on the HR Hiring Journal?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the timetable agenda. 5:00 p.m., we have a public hearing for State Avenue and 8th Street Southwest striping, and that will be presented by City Engineer Kubus. Mr. Kubus?
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. I don't know if anyone from the public had came in the room. There is some printouts in the back of the room to look at some of the options that we were considering. I believe the commission has those options in their packet as well. I guess, first of all, starting with a little bit of history in there, that anyone who's drove the concrete section of South State Avenue realizes that it's in need of some new pavement marking. To my knowledge, that's original pavement marking from when that street was paved in the mid-'80s, so it's well past its expected useful life. What we've talked about as staff and are considering and presenting to you today would be the option of restriping as a three-lane road with bike lanes on each side. So that's where we have some options. Again, we have three options, and most of them focus on the intersection of State Avenue and 8th Street Southwest. The fourth option could be to re-stripe it as the four-lane section, just as it is today. If we go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the road diet, and many of you are familiar with that terminology, most often it's used in the context of taking an undivided four-lane highway and shrinking it up one lane, not changing the pavement section, but removing one of the through lanes, adding a middle turn lane, and then just having one through lane in each direction. And the guidance that's available today from the Federal Highway Administration says that those three-lane sections can handle volumes of 15,000 to 17,500 vehicles per day. On this corridor, it varies depending exactly where you're at on 8th Street or State Avenue, but it's around 5,000 vehicles per day, so well below the maximum volumes that the three-lane section could handle. There is some more formal guidance from the Federal Highway Administration that I think is important, that they've deemed road diets and other roadway reconfigurations as a proven safety countermeasure. If you recall, a few years ago, we had several citizens on the south end of State Avenue whose homes back up to State Avenue that came before this board and asked the city, what could we do to improve the safety on South State Avenue? And at the time, we had installed some guard rail there. We had a lot of vehicles that were using excessive speeds, leaving the roadway and causing personal property damage, either fences, sheds, and in one case, it even got close to the home and hit their deck, and had some pretty compelling photographs of those accidents. So the safety measure we put in place at that time was guard rail, which if I recall, since that was put up, has been hit twice, so we haven't had any more personal property incidences, but our property now has been hit, and so we know the problem is still existing. And this is a measure that the Federal Highway Administration, the road diet, they have studies suggesting that it reduces accidents, lowers speeds, and we feel it would be a good measure. So the cost is close to a push. It probably costs a little bit more to re-stripe it in this configuration as a three-lane because of the bike lanes added on each side. But there's some anecdotal evidence from other cities that if you're redoing the pavement, in this case, you know, the pavement marking that's there is gone already, so we'd need to re-stripe it either way, that we feel it wouldn't cost much more to re-stripe it as this road diet three-lane section versus the four-lane section. If we can go to the next slide, these are some of the options, and it's maybe a little hard to see on the overhead, kind of have to draw some fine lines in there to delineate the pavement marking, but this is the north taper, and so the street you see going to the top of the page is a street that now goes behind MDU and behind Southwest Grain. I know there's been some comments about grain trucks that have been lined up on State Avenue, and that was, to me, a new phenomenon. Maybe that happens every year, but I also witnessed it the last couple of years. Again, a little bit hard to see on this photo, but the taper from five lanes, so this bridge is actually five lanes, the taper down to three lanes would happen north of 2nd Street. That's 2nd Street South that's going to the top of the slide. So there would be room, I'm not saying it's right, but we had a lot of grain trucks parked out on State Avenue during this time. I suppose a lot of farmers are taking product to market, making bin space out on their farms before the harvest, so we wouldn't be dropping that lane for, you know, probably right at the far right side of the sheet, we would drop that lane. So again, not that I want to make State Avenue a parking lot, but we would have room for vehicles for a short period of time to be parked there. We'd have the five lanes still. On the next slide, this would be Option 1 on the south end. So this is north to the top of the page. 8th Street is going left to right here. If you drive it all that much, you know there's a, oh, thank you, there is a raised concrete island that's kind of a unique design, probably not something we would do today. Right there is a raised concrete island. If we would leave that in place, we've developed a couple options for traffic on 8th Street. They could come jog around it, and then this would be a right turn lane as it is now. It's not the best, the through traffic would really have to jog pretty sharply right here to get around that raised island. If you go to the next slide, Option 2 would be removing that island. So if the island goes away, this middle turn, or the middle turn lane can just stay as it is through the intersection. We might need to look closer at some of the pedestrian crosswalks here. If this island were gone, we'd probably move this crosswalk back there to get east to west, and this one could stay as it is. This crosswalk here would move over a little bit further to the east. Minor details that we'd work out during the final design of this, but it is kind of a cumbersome, cumbersome raised island there that was a, must have been a DOT standard design back in the mid-'80s again. On the next slide, it's just another option, Option 3, to maintain the island while allowing this traffic. Again, you have to make kind of a sharp jog to get through there. And just for reference, too, this gravel road going to the south is planned to be the extension of State Avenue South at some point in the future. You know, there was quite a bit of development activity proposed here five or six years ago. That's, you know, it culminated in just these apartment buildings that got built. Nothing else really on the table right now, but it certainly would be something to consider in the future, that leg going to the south will be potentially a busy roadway in the future. So, did some number crunching based on the bids we've received for concrete removal and concrete repair work this year through our sidewalk project. Removing that island would be about $25,000. Removing it and just replacing it with concrete pavement, what was a little bit higher than I anticipated, that I had told this body two weeks ago that we hope to keep this under that $100,000 mark. A few years earlier, we had a $70,000 quote. I think what I failed to take into account was that at that time, we were just looking at State Avenue and adding it to the State Avenue Bridge Project. When you include 8th Street Southeast, that's probably 5/8 of a mile, or 8th Street Southwest, it's really closer to about $200,000. So whether or not the dollars are in place to do that this year, we'd really need to take that through a bid process at that dollar value, and to do that in a timely fashion, I don't think we'd get this striped this year anymore. So I still think it's important that we re-stripe this road. What we were planning is grooving it in and laying tape down, which, that's what's there right now, and it's lasted for three decades, so I feel pretty comfortable that it's a good investment. It just might be that we have to push this off till 2019, and any comments, you know, would be appreciated from either the commission or the public as to what direction that, you know, as far as options of striping that you'd like to see here.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. I know there's been plenty of comments online, to say the least, but, Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Kubus before I open up the public hearing?
Mr. President, now, Mr. Kubus, personally, I like the change that you're recommending. I like the bike lanes. When you compare it with what's there now, there's nothing, nothing there that's safe for the bikers, number one, compared to the bike lanes that you'd put in. Number two, compared to what's there now, there's nothing safe for anyone taking a left-hand turn, because there are no turning lanes there, which there would be in this change, left or right, I guess, whichever way you're driving. So, you know, I like that. As far as the options go, I would say that we need to, personally, I'd like to see the concrete gone, the intersection there. You know, I think widen that up a little bit, the trucks won't have their problem anymore. Three, on a comment, I've been in this community 40 years, I've never seen two trucks backed up on that corner. I cannot say I've seen a grain truck or any type of truck backed up on that corner that they're talking about there. So I don't, there might be more grain trucks this time of the year, granted, it's harvest season, but I don't think it's a fall-on-your-sword type of move that we got to make to accommodate grain trucks there.
And I don't believe they're getting backed up there. Where I had seen it, and I think where some of the comments were coming from, was just between the river and the railroad tracks, there was trucks that were northbound looking to turn onto 2nd Street South, and they were just stacked up on the roadway parked, because 2nd Street South was a parking lot, and I'm sure Southwest Grains, all the area they had were full of trucks, too. I didn't drive in there, but that's happened out in Stark County, out by the grain terminal by Taylor. Same thing happens, you know, there's these peak days or a week.
But is it, is it an issue that's bigger than the safety of the bike lanes and the safety of the journeying lanes? I don't think so.
But I don't think so either, just because of the duration of the time. And again, we would allow, you know, there would still be additional lanes in this stretch for the northbound traffic.
So you're taking care of that problem?
We wouldn't change that side of the road, yes.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Kubus, Commissioners? You still with us, Mr. Frederick?
Yep, I'm still here. No question.
Okay. I think it would, the removal of that corner, the cement on the corner, would make it a lot easier on public works with snow cleaning.
Our drivers appreciate it, I'm sure.
You can tell by the condition of the island.
Yeah, you can tell. You can tell that it's been.
Think of the money we'd save from sharpening blades. You're correct.
It's been clipped a few times. I guess my concern is ultimately the build-out there if state extends, and we do have a much larger project over there with Park and Rec, that we're looking at the possibility of even that corner transitioning into a roundabout type of exchange, and do we include something, because I'm still hearing a lot of concerns about 8th Street over by Loaf and Jug, and how we try to fix that issue, too. If we're going to do projects here, you know, if we can, and I know we've had this discussion before, Mr. Kubus, about that intersection over by Loaf and Jug, and I just think we should, if we're going to continue to look at the public safety, especially on these roadways, we need to address not only that corner on 8th and States, but that corner over there on 8th by Loaf and Jug. So, I would like to see this project maybe held off till next year, and then we examine everything, and maybe that can be part of our, the additional monies we're going to spend on road projects. We could spend a little extra there and ensure the public that, you know, safety there.
One thing I forgot to add, too, not that this would make the ultimate connection to the Crooked Crane Trail, we see, you know, in discussions with our trail committee, most of the usage of the south side of the Crooked Crane Trail would probably be bikers. Not to say some people wouldn't walk it or jog down there, but with the addition of this bike lane, it really would create that loop from the north side to the south side, so it has one additional benefit there.
So would that be considered the trail path is the bike lane?
Well, it certainly could be. You know, the rest of it is kind of a shared-use path for walkers, joggers, and bikers on the north side. On the south side right now, it's pretty well set up just for bikers, so, you know, this could be that connection for bikers, and not to say in the future, as this develops out, we wouldn't have a sidewalk on that side of, on the west side of State Avenue. That could be that connection for people on foot as well.
Mr. President, I like your idea. I was thinking the same thing myself on maybe holding off. I know we have a lot of potential changes down in that area, and maybe it's best to see how that development is going to happen, and if it is, and then making a decision. I know from the public input I got, people said, well, I don't see anyone biking that area. Why, what's the need for, to reduce the driving lanes to accommodate bikers when they're currently not even utilizing any of that area? But I do think for the safety issue, I think that's important, and if we do, if Park and Rec does choose to have a complex down there, I think we'll see a lot more foot and bike traffic, and that's definitely going to be a priority for everyone, is making sure that those parents and families and kids have a safe way to travel to and from those sporting events.
The whole project, like I said, we need to look at 8th as it extends over to 22 there, and dealing with that eventually. Whatever DOT's recommendations are, and whatever engineering, city engineering's recommendations are, ultimately, we have to do something with that intersection before there is, you know, an accident, a really bad accident, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think anything can be done this year.
No.
Either. You know, we want to get bids and do it right, anyway. As far as, you know, the count about, you don't see any bike riders down there, and it's because there's no bike lane down there. Goes on the same line as years ago, they asked why do we need a city forester? There's no forest here. Exactly. That's why we need a city forester, to help us develop the trees and the aesthetic beauty of the city. That's why we hired a forester, you know, so you put bike lanes in there, it's going to get used.
All right, if no one else has any comments or questions for Mr. Kubus, I will open up the public hearing. All right, I'll open the public hearing. If anyone from the public wishes to come forward, please state your name and let us know your concerns with this striping.
My name is Rick Bedoin, and I live on the south side in the Hart River subdivision. Now, this re-striping, I'm not for it, because that's a truck route. You have a lot of trucks driving on that stretch of road, and as far as I'm concerned, the money you're going to be spending, you could do the same thing as 10th Avenue East, widen that sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk. thing as 10th Avenue East, widen that sidewalk to a five-foot sidewalk where they could pedal on that. There's not very many people that walk on that sidewalk from 8th Street all the way north, you know? And then that, putting kids on that with bicycles, and there's bottom dump trucks, you know, on that stretch of road, you know? And people, they accelerate. You know why? Because this town does not have a north-south four-lane artery in it. Once they get past that, on States, on the other side of Valard, they barrel it because they're sick and tired of stuck behind somebody else in single-file traffic. And that's right now, if somebody's turning left, they go into the other lane to pass, you know? And I've seen a lot of it where these trucks are, they're cruising on that stretch. And I've seen them backed up on the 8th Street, waiting to turn left on, when they hit the, heading south where that island is. Now, that bridge on top has what, a five-foot sidewalk on it? The overpass bridge?
One side has a five-foot sidewalk, another is a 10-foot shared-use path.
Yeah. Now, there is a sidewalk on the east side, you know, all the way on that whole stretch of road. Now, if that could be widened another two feet, you know, that way the bicycles could be on there instead of being on the, being down in the traffic lanes. I, personally, I've had my bicycle out there. I will not drive on that road because I stay on the sidewalks because you're gonna get killed, especially with all the distracted driving.
But North Dakota law kinda wants you off the sidewalks to follow traffic. It's more safer to follow with, with traffic.
Yeah.
Is there studies?
And then the other point that I was gonna state is that the Hart River Bridge on that section, the south approach to that bridge, I think that concrete has sunk in about four inches. There's a cold patch in there now, but it's, it's rough. I mean, when you hit that, it's really bad. That needs to be patched up on that section there.
I think that's why we wanna take our time, Mr. Bedoin, with this, and look at all our options.
Yeah.
And that way, if we're, if we're going to do anything major, that we look at that issue, like the bridge, look at those intersections.
Because there are a lot of bottom dump semis, they're hauling that sandstone off of that mute on there, and they come on, all the way out on the Valard on that. But that's one thing this town needs, is to improve its traffic flow because it's, I mean, you're, when you're gonna, already you're gonna put, what, South Main into single-lane traffic there too? I mean, I'd just about get rear-ended trying to turn. I'm, you know, on 5th Street there. You watch behind them, and with their distracted driving, you wonder if they're gonna, when you've got a single lane, they're gonna turn into that left-turn lane to go wrong.
That's why we're trying to slow people down.
Yeah.
Everybody's in a hurry.
Yeah, I know. So that's the only thing, you're gonna have to study it a little bit more, I think. That's about all I've got to say about that.
Well, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any concerns on this proposal for striping?
President Dicker, one thing I'd like to add is that portion of State Avenue needs to be striped. I mean, so we're gonna have a cost of striping it, whether it be four-lane or three-lane. And so that's why we're looking at different options right now. So there will be a cost in striping it, no matter which direction we go.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns, I guess the suggestion, I know it's, we have on our task order here, but this task order is, Mr. Kubis, is this more or less for the actual striping or the engineering layout of the striping?
That was for the layouts that you saw today, and Highlands had done that at a zero-cost change order to the city to develop these layouts for the city. So, you know, if you want to approve that or not, the work is, you know, what we were looking at today.
Okay. But this is not a final decision on what we're going, they're just basically presenting options?
Certainly not, yeah, just presenting options, you know, strictly for the public hearing to take input, see if we wanna move forward with this. Like Mr. Zurov said, I think we can all agree, it just needs to be striped, and how we wanna do that and the timing of it is really the decision that we're looking for. So it sounds like we have some time through the fall and winter to fine-tune this, see if other developments move forward quicker than we expect. If that's the case, maybe that changes that intersection on the south end.
The land directly to the west of States, that undeveloped hill that was leveled, is there any expectation of further development? Because I would, I would think in a development agreement with them, that there would be a sidewalk on the west side of States, if that would ever be finalized.
There would be as a standard condition of their building, it would be to put in a sidewalk.
And so I'm thinking if, if we can find out where they're at, you know, maybe that changes our, what we're going to do too in that area.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from, from that group for at least two or three years.
And what, because of that, and I know this is going off a little bit, to what extent do we hold developers to some kind of standard? Because that land was disrupted, and it was basically pasture land, and now we have a bunch of, you know, destroyed pasture, and we got nothing but weeds growing over there.
Well, you know, there's an ordinance for weed control. I'm sure, you know, if their vegetation gets so high, I think they've been fairly good about mowing when they can, especially considering they're from California, if I remember right. They do hire somebody locally to get it mowed. I believe that development was plotted as, was zoned as a PUD, so there might be some timetable, I don't know if Mr. Hadley's in here, but might be some timetables. A lot of those were time-sensitive. If, if no development by given date, then the PUD could expire, which wouldn't necessarily gain us anything, but it might put a little pressure on, on the owner to do something.
Mr. Hadley, if you could look into that PUD, get us a report back, that would be appreciated.
Mr. President, commissioners? Yeah, it was a PUD, and the, at a two-year timeframe, I believe, we've held off on moving anything as far as cancellation, just because there was sewer and water and some other things that were put in as part of that development in hopes that it might come back. So as far as canceling it out, it's very similar to Pinecrest.
Right, I think we need to look into it because there are some issues there too that need to be addressed. So, and that could play into this, what we ultimately do on States.
Sure, yep.
So, all right, thank you. All right, task order. Any questions on the task order for Mr. Kubis? I'll look for a motion on the task order amendment.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the task order amendment?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up on our timetable is our criminal code updates, and that'll be handled by City Attorney Cripe. Welcome back aboard.
Thank you. We had last week the first reading of ordinances, 1679, 1680, and 1681, which are some updates to the criminal code that were presented by City Prosecutor Wanko. And at this point, we're just looking for the public comment and a final vote on those.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Cripe?
Ms. Cripe, these were just updates from State Statute, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if there are no questions or comments from commissioners, I'll open up the public hearing on these ordinance amendments and changes. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name, let us know what your concerns are with these ordinances and the amendments. This is dealing with our criminal code, Chapter 23, criminal code, Chapter 25, and criminal code update to Chapter 33. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public have any concerns on our updates to our criminal code? Seeing no one from the public has any criminal code concerns, commissioners, any further questions, comments on these updates?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Counselor, can we, a motion to do all three at the same time, or you want individual motion?
I think to preserve the minutes, it would be better to do a motion for each of them.
Good.
So the first item up will be criminal code update to Chapter 23, and this will be ordinance number 1679.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve 1679 as amended.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing non-vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is Chapter 25, and that is ordinance number 1680.
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance number 1680.
We have a motion to approve 1680?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on 1680? Hearing non-vote, Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1680. Next item up is Chapter 33. It is the amendment to Chapter 33, and this is ordinance number 1681. Look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance number 1681.
We have a motion to approve 1681.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments on 1681? Hearing non-vote, Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go back to, we have nothing from the fire department in public safety this evening, but we do have something from the police department. Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. With the start of the school year surprisingly upon us already, we thought it'd be a good time to do a brief presentation about our school resource officer program, our SRO programs to some that we are continually looking on expanding and making better. Right now, we have an excellent working relationship with the Dickens Public School District, and tonight I have Sergeant Brandon Stockey with me. Sergeant Stockey's gonna do a presentation on what we had seen, numbers and trends in the first half of the 2019 school year, and give you guys an opportunity to ask him some questions as far as some of the new programs and ideas that we have leading into the start of the second half of 2019 school year. So at this time, I'd ask Sergeant Stockey to come up and do a presentation, please. Mr. President, commissioners, if I find a clicker, I will do the presentation. All right, so with the SRO program for the City of Dickinson Police Department, we have two of us, myself, Sergeant Brandon Stockey, and Officer Winery. I am at the high school. Officer Winery is full-time at the middle school, and we split the elementary, the seven public elementary schools. So this is for the public school system. Last year, so the 1819 school year, we dealt with over 400 incidences in our schools, with incidences as classified as any time the school administration called one of us, or the police department, or if a child called one of us, or the police department, or a teacher for something that happened at, or teacher or parents, something that happened at school. So that's what we classify as incidences. So 2018-19 school year, we took, at Dickinson High School, 196 calls for service, at the middle school, 102, at all the seven elementary schools, 140, and at Southwest Community High School, four. So to further break those down, these are citations. So out of those 400 incidences, these are the ones we issued citations for in a juvenile court. Our biggest was tobacco, and these are mostly vapes. Vapes became a big trend a couple years ago, and it continues to go up every year of juveniles using vaping devices in school and out of school that we're dealing with. So we had 70 vape citations, 25 disorderly conducts, 22 unrulyes, 13 drug offenses, and nine assaults. So an unruly call, or unruly juvenile, is a crime that only juveniles can commit, adults cannot. So how it works is a juvenile's not, juvenile disrupt education, yells in the classroom, starts throwing tables or books, that can be classified as unruly act. So we're some little citations for that. So 2017-18 school year, from August till the end of school, compared to the 2018-19 school year, just for calls for services at those schools. So 1718 at DHS, we had 134 calls, and in 1819, we had 196. For Dickinson Middle School, we had 92 at 1718. In 1819, we had 102. In the elementary schools, we had 139 for 1718, and this last school year, we had 140. And then seven at Southwest Community High School, 1718, and four in 1819. Some things we do in the schools, the SROs, is we are, we do bike safety talks. I go over to early head start and head start and do bicycle helmet fittings for those kids, do registered watchdog dad groups, help with that stuff. I run a tech tip program for the high school kids and the middle school kids. We do career fairs, ALSS trainings for the school districts. We run DARE. So we ran DARE in 7th grade, and this year, we're looking at running DARE in all 5th graders, 5th grade as well. Adopt a Cop is our patrol shift program, so our patrol shifts adopt a school, patrol officers adopt a school, and then during the school day, they go in there to just play with those elementary kids, play in the playground, go have lunch with them. And we did 100, the police department did 305 of those last school year. Then we attend athletic events and do presentations on sexting drugs, tobacco, and alcohol in those classes. Trends that we've been seeing with those numbers that I track every year for this last school year has been mental health issues at a younger age. Mental health is becoming a thing we're seeing at a younger age in those elementary schools. Vaping and tobacco use, I already covered that, that vaping seems to go up every year. Assaults, disorderly conducts and unruly acts, and marijuana usage. And then last year, Tom went there, we graduated 287 kids from 7th grade. There was three of us last year who are trained DARE officers. This summer, we sent two more officers to DARE school, that is Officer Taylor Peters and Officer Corey Wallace. So we have five total trained DARE officers for the police department, and so with that, we are picking up all 5th graders. So this year, we'll be doing 5th grade DARE as well as 7th grade DARE. So we're trying to bring that program to help prevent this tobacco use that we're seeing and this drug use. And with that, I'll answer any questions you guys have for me.
All right, any questions for Sergeant Stockey?
Sergeant Stockey, where do you think the youth, where are they getting access to their vapes?
That's a very good question. So we do run with the police department compliance, that tobacco compliance checks through Southwest District Health. I just did one of these on Friday, and we did it during the day, and that, with that, we've had, we had a juvenile, 16-year-old volunteer who comes in and works for Southwest District Health to do those tobacco buys. Four of our retailers did fail that and did sell, sell to that minor. I'm not saying that's where they're getting it from. I guess it's the same way as when I was a kid, you know someone who's 18, or you know someone who's 21 who could be supplying as well. So I can't just blame it all on our realtors, because there's always ways to get it, including the internet.
So they can purchase on the internet as well?
Correct. You can purchase that stuff on the internet and get it sent to your house.
That makes it tough.
It does.
Any other questions for Mr. Stockey? I should say Sergeant Stockey, address you by the proper rank.
Well, thank you for all your work that you do with the kids.
Thank you.
Hard work. I think you have some other announcement you need to make, chief.
Regarding?
Well... Well, I saw the internet this weekend. You guys did pretty good.
Yes, you're referring to our annual police officers convention, National Police Officers Convention that was held in Grand Forks this year. My staff members did pretty well. Officer, Senior Officer Jaden Peters finished second in the K-9 Division. He'll just look short of first place. Sergeant Kylan Klausert took first place in the, in the foot race, the pursuit foot race. And we had a four-person team as far as a four-man gun competition that took first place, that did very well with that.
Well, congratulations. You guys did an awesome job, so.
And Officer Peters has a pretty young dog too, so...
He does. He has a very young dog, yep.
Any other comments or, or questions for Chief or Sergeant Stockey? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into Public Works, and Public Works Director Zeroff, you have a change order.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission members. This change order is for City Project 201900, which is the city mill and overlay project that I'm sure everybody's familiar with. It's a fairway street project, some of 5th Street, Park Street, and 5th Avenue hillside in that area. There was a city mill and overlay curb and gutter, and some ADA concrete work was done. As they were milling the area of 5th Avenue West and Park Street, there was limited old asphalt in that area. When they milled it, they came upon some soft ground, spongy areas that did not look really real well. City Engineer Kubis and myself went up there. We looked at some of the soft areas. It was determined at that time to do some subcuts, which is digging and removing some of the soils. So, we discussed it with Highlands, who's the consultant on the job, that the subcut be 10 inches, 10 and 1/2 inches, and that we replace it with 8 inches of milled asphalt and then a 2 and 1/2 inch lift, which would get it at the older asphalt level. And then after that, there would be the additional cost of a 2 and 1/2 inch lift on top of that. There was areas there and some other areas in that area that the base material was soft and needed to be removed and replaced. In fact, we did look at, discuss another cul-de-sac area that we decided not to mill the whole area, just mill along the feather it so we wouldn't come upon the same situation. So, that was discussed, and quantities and areas were also looked at by the consultant. One of the other things that we, we talked about at the same time was to not dig all the water valves to full depth and just to adjust them by the top cover and trying to save some money in that area so we didn't have to dig and replace all the main valves, which was in the original contract, which did save about $16,800 by doing that. The other, the increase in the work was $117,760 to dig the subcuts, put the base in and the additional paving. I guess if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov on the task order? This is a task order amendment.
A change order.
Change order. Excuse me, change order for the mill and overlay. Any questions? No one has any questions? I'd look for a motion on the change order.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions on the change order? Now, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the change order.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, we have nothing this evening. And we have nothing further in building. Move on to item 10, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If anyone has any concerns that pertain to the city of Dickinson, please come forward, state your name, let us know what your concerns are.
I hate to do this, but...
You would just want to state your name again for the record?
Rick Bedoin. I live on the south side on 6th Avenue Southwest. The only thing I was considered about is there's a section of South Main, the 300 block there on the west side. It hasn't had a sidewalk in it for about 35 years, and I think it's about time to get a sidewalk for there, so...
Are you, the, the section that drops down the hill there?
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree with you. It's been, it's probably been longer than 35 years.
Yeah, I think there was asphalt there a long time ago, and it just broke up, so... Okay, that's about it.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone else from the public have any concerns, not on our agenda? Anyone from the public? Seeing there is no one else from the public that has any concerns, I will close the public issues. Commissioners, do you have any issues you wish to address or concerns you wish to state? Nothing from Commissioners? Seeing nothing from the Commission, I would look for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
With a second, we are adjourned.